How common is it for utility companies to contract with these types of political...
So I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with our meeting. We've got a couple of items on the agenda, and we don't want to hold anybody up. Items for actions: A communication from Mayor Sherman P. Lee Sr. requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. A list of current vacancies is included with the agenda for this meeting. Need a motion?
So move.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Ms. Price, she's not here. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch? Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee's not here, okay?
Thank you, and the motion passes. We have a communication from myself, Vice Mayor Patricia Whiteboy, Chair of City Council Personnel Committee, requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss a personnel matter pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 1 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended. Need another motion?
So move.
Madam Clerk, you ready and call the roll?
Ms. Sanchez Jones? Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And the motion passes. We have a communication from our city attorney requesting that council convene in a closed meeting to discuss the acquisition of publicly owned property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A, 3 Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
I so move.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
And Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Items listed on the 2:00 PM council docket requiring discussion, clarification, and additions/ deletions to the 2:00 PM agenda. Do we have any items or any corrections? No? So we'll move on to our briefings, and I'll call on our city manager, Mr. Cowell, to introduce our briefings. I think the code amendment is first.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do have two briefings today, and as mentioned, the first is the code amendment for Section 32124, which I think the city attorney is going to introduce. And then the second item will be the Gun Violence Prevention Framework update, which, of course, we've been doing monthly, and I'll give an intro to that once we get to that item.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would qualify this First Amendment under the general good government. In working with our Commissioner of Revenue, we're simply looking to move the date, the due date for personal property taxes owned by public service corporations from May 31st to December 5th. Now, currently, the way we do things requires a true-up, which takes staff time, cost, and it complicates things. Moving it back, we will have a short, small loss of revenue by moving it back that one year, that first year, but then there won't, we won't realize that, but what we gain in efficiency will be made up over time. This is just, I think that the letter goes in, explains it very well and very detailed, but in essence, we're just trying to do this, work with our Commissioner of Revenue. We've got a Commissioner of Revenue who's taking a look at their processes, quite frankly, and analyzing what works best, and he believes this change works best, and we support him in that, and ask that council consider this amendment. Happy to answer any questions you might have regarding this code amendment, this proposed code amendment.
Does anyone have any questions? Not at this time.
Then we will put this on the agendas for adoption at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor and Council, the second briefing we have, as mentioned, is our monthly update on the Gun Violence Prevention Framework, and we'll do as we have done in previous updates. Of course, last month, we didn't have this update because we did the annual report from the Police Department. We will begin with Chief Roman giving an overview of the recent police actions. We'll then transition to Angie O'Brien, who'll give us an update on the Star City Safe Initiative, and then conclude with Councilmember Cobb and the work of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. So with that, Chief?
Good morning, members of council. It is good to be here with you again. In the usual fashion, what I generally do is start out just simply by telling you about the number of firearms that we have seized. So throughout July 27, July 1, throughout July 27, we've seized an additional 36 firearms, which brings the grand total for the year to 204 firearms that we have seized from the streets. Next, generally, I talk about the warrants that we've served, and this month, for the month of July, I should say, we've served 180 felony warrants and 402 misdemeanor warrants. I'll just go over a couple of the gun violence incidents, obviously, that we have seen during the month of July. So on July 22, as many of you are already aware, our officers responded to the 1,000 block of Pinmar. This was in regards to a homicide. Six days later, Mr. Richard Quarles was arrested and charged with that murder. On July 30 of this year, officers responded to the 800 block of Hershberger Road due to another homicide. After our officers got there and our detectives investigated that offense, we were able to arrest Mr. Lord Lloyd Harris, who was taken into custody and ultimately charged with murder. On July 31, we had a report of someone with a gunshot wound who was sitting in their car at about 2:00 in the morning on Cortland. This shot caused a superficial wound in which that person drove themselves to the hospital. It was not a life-threatening wound, obviously, because that case is less than 24, 48 hours old, we're still investigating that one as well. In the way of court proceedings, on July 13 of this year, Mr. Taywan Johnson pled guilty to second-degree murder and use of a firearm in commission of a felon. This was a homicide that occurred back in April of 2021 in the Lansdowne community. So with that guilty plea, we are now waiting on the sentencing hearing, and when that happens, I will be sure to bring that information back to you all as well. And last but not least, in the way of prosecutions, on July 15, Mr. DeMarcus Glenn pled guilty in federal court to possession of a firearm in furtherance of a drug trafficking crime. Obviously, his sentencing has not occurred yet, but because of that plea, obviously, the sentencing would occur hopefully sometime soon, and I will definitely bring that information back at the time that it occurs. Next, usually, I talk about the reset deployments as it correlates to gun violence, and this month, in the month of July, the reset team deployed three times in reference to gunshot wounds, to the areas, obviously, offering resources to the individuals in the area and to see what, if any, assistance that we as a department, any community, could offer the residents of that community. You've heard me say many times before that once the yellow caution police crime tape goes down, our citizens are still left with the trauma of that event, and so our idea, obviously, for reset, is to get in there and see what kind of resources we can offer, and that goes from everything from counseling, I think, in the, I believe, the Dale Avenue incident, some of our reset volunteers helped elderly female with some lawn care issues because that's what she needed at the time, and that's what they did. So with that being said, that is the public safety briefing. Obviously, the first part of July was, we don't like to say this word at the Police Department, but somewhat quiet as it relates to gun violence, but obviously, we ended the month in a way that we did not want to see that month end. So we will definitely try to replicate in the month of August what we saw in the beginning part of July. So that's our monthly update. If you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer those.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Cowell, last time you enclosed that briefing in your weekly update.
Yes, so what the chief will do after this is he will send to me...
Send it to you, and you'll send it to us. Okay, because that's good information, and, you know, it's good for us to help you. You know, everybody's always saying we need to get that information out there, get the, you know, let the community know what we're doing, and we're gonna help you do that, Chief, and it's always good to have that information so that, you know, I tried to write it all down, but if I'm gonna get it, that's good.
We didn't have that last time because of the annual report.
That's fine, no, that's fine. I just want to make sure we have it, because like I said, you know, we, the community is always asking, and we can help the chief get that information out there if we have it. Do you have any questions?
Yes, I just had one for the chief.
Okay, Ms. Moon.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. With regards to the homicide that occurred on July 30, the one where the brother killed the other brother and the two dogs?
Yes.
Was there ever noted what the motive was behind that, what caused that death?
Yeah.
In killing the dogs?
You know, I wish I could talk more about that. Obviously, you know, as the chief of police stand at the podium, everyone, including defense attorneys, listen, and our number-one goal is to make sure that the victims in the case can receive justice, and I know that everything I say could impact the trial.
Okay, I understand.
But what I can tell you is that, obviously, that was a situation that is very, very tough to intercept, when there is a homicide that occurs in that fashion in such anger in which two animals are killed along with a human being. Unfortunately, that is very hard for us to either predict, get in front of, to mitigate, and hopefully prevent from happening, especially when there is not much interaction at all, police interaction at all, prior to the incident. So I wish I could tell you why, but unfortunately, you know, at this point, we really don't know the answer to why the animals would be killed as well.
Yeah, that's what was puzzling, was the animals.
Very puzzling, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
On that note, I want to say thank you to the first respondent for taking the dog that was still alive to the emergency vet, so that was very good.
A lot of the...
It's unfortunate that they had to do it. Yeah, that they had to do it, yeah, so.
Well, thank you for saying that, and I will certainly pass that on to the officers and animal wardens who were called out to not only deal with the emergency, but obviously necropsies, which obviously is an autopsy for an animal, has to be completed and everything, and our staff is taking care of that as well.
And I went by there hours later, and still there was police presence there, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, I just have one comment. It seems that we are getting a little bit more cooperation as it comes to arrest and, you know, being able to actually arrest some individuals who've committed some of these offenses, so that's really positive, because I know for the longest time, nobody would cooperate with the authorities, and we were not able to make hardly any arrests, but it seems like that has gotten better and seems like it's working, whatever you guys are doing, so I just wanted to say thank you for that. And just one other question, which I probably should have asked the superintendent about arrest juveniles. I was leaving this parking lot the other day, and there was a juvenile who had been detained because he had a weapon, he had a gun, and so he was going over to juvenile, but I'm wondering what happened, what is the process, what happens to those juveniles at that point? I didn't see any adult with him or anything, but I'm just wondering how that works.
Yes, well, great question. I get asked that question a lot. It just really depends on the severity of the individual circumstances and the history of the juvenile.
Okay.
So what happens in a case like that is if an arrest was made, and in this case, it sounds like one was, the officer would then take the juvenile to juvenile intake and speak with a intake worker, which is basically a magistrate for a juvenile, and certainly articulate the circumstances associated with the arrest, and the intake worker will then look at history and a various composite of other things that go into the decision-making process as to whether that juvenile will be taken to Corner Springs or perhaps just a court date set, and then obviously, the court proceedings would happen, so.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was wondering, so they would go to Corner Springs, so they would still continue to get their school training, their education, I mean, all of that will continue at Corner Springs. I guess I don't know how that operates, but...
Yeah, generally, that would still occur.
Okay, that would still occur, yeah, I was just wondering, I just saw him there, and I didn't see any adults or anybody, he was by himself, so I just wondered what the process was.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Cobb, or do you want to go into your...
Thank you, Chief, and we'll have Angie come up.
Oh, Angie.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Angie will give kind of a brief update on the Star City Safe Initiative, which, of course, is the part that is working alongside the chief and the police officers as well in responding to gun violence.
Okay.
Good morning, almost afternoon. So just like with any other time I give one of these updates, I'm gonna go over the highlights and mention some of the upcoming activities. So these are the highlights from the summer, and this would be broken down into Parks and Recreation, libraries, human resources, and the Burglum Center, and some collaboration work with the Burglum Center, which is newer to this report. With Parks and Recreation, Washington Park, as you all know, had free pool admission on Mondays this year or this summer. As of mid-July, they had served over 1,400 residents at the pool, and of course, you know that the pool will be closing on Sunday, August 14, for renovations. However, there's gonna be a party there at the pool, DJ giveaways and some light refreshments. The admission will be a dollar. With Eureka Park, the open gym hours still continue on Wednesdays, and staff are working with Hoop Club for open gym clinics for this winter. Reset is working with youth at Eureka Park. They're averaging right now around 15 youth who are participating from the ages of nine to 17, and they're playing basketball, toss football, and dancing. The Melrose Library, the extended hours continue. This summer, they have experienced some very large crowds on those extended evening hours, some upwards toward 300 or 400 residents, but they are averaging around 150 residents at this time for dinner and a movie on Wednesday evenings. This summer, they have also given away 125 literacy kits to those youth who are participating in the extended hours or the Star City Safe Initiative at the libraries. Some of the other activities that have been underway this summer have been with the kids' farmer's market. Youth have been able to shop for free and fresh produce and take those home. There is also with Reset, there is a teen chess club, so we also, you know, we realize that youth have all different types of interests, and this one is very interesting to me, that teen chess club is on Mondays, and Reset is working, they have six youth participants who are learning to play chess. The human resources, the teen apprenticeship graduation cohort was on July 14. Seven youth are working in city departments, DOT, Fire EMS, Hotel Roanoke, the libraries, the sheriff's office, and Parks and Recreation. There has, in a previous update, I think late spring, I mentioned that human resources was working on a one-page document that talked about the guidelines and introduction to the teen apprenticeship program. That has been complete, and I'll make sure I get that to the city manager so he can share that with you all this week. So there are two major projects that are underway with the Burglum Center. One is a Stop the Violence campaign, and the other is an empathy project. One, they both are falling under the umbrella of the Star City Safe Initiative, so I'm gonna share a little bit of information about both of these. The Stop the Violence campaign is with Chris Roberts and Robin, her team at the Burglum Center, and they've partnered with Jane Gabriel and Brian Hancock, and they are completing a giant vinyl mural for the Coliseum, and there's gonna be some QR codes that are on this mural that are going to tell the survivors' stories, and they're gonna share information about their loved ones who have been lost to gun violence, and they're gonna be using these stories also to, on a billboard campaign of the Stop the Violence, and so these survivors' stories and photographs are going to be on billboards with a brief, brief information about the victim's name, date of death, and a tagline, "Stop the Violence." So more information will be coming when that is moved along a little more with the project timeline. The other one is an empathy project, and this is where Chris Roberts and Robin are working together with her team, partnering with the same artist, and these are hollow core doors, and they're gonna be painted with the victim's stories and translated to canvas on the doors, and the theme of these is "In Terms of Lives Affected by Gun Violence: Opening and Closing Doors." And these doors are going to be mobile, they can go around to different events throughout the city, but the home will be at the Burglum Center. So as you can imagine, both of these projects are very delicate in nature and very sensitive. So staff are being very cautious with these conversations with the survivors, very, very delicate, these are very impactful and emotional stories, and we're really taking a lot of extra steps and caution when working with these families and not doing anything outside of their comfort level. So a lot will be coming down the road with this, they've already started some of these interviews with the families, but just, this is kind of a preview of what this work will look like. National Night Out, as it pertains to the Star City Safe Initiative, their National Night Out, Jeffrey's been working with two neighborhoods, Fair Lawn and Villa Heights, and so the reason why these two have been chosen is because of their capacity or lack thereof of a formal neighborhood at this time. So with Fair Lawn, the Star City Safe Initiative is gonna be providing food, tables, and tents, and activities, and their goal is to serve 200 residents in that area. With Villa Heights, now this is gonna be a much larger event, as this group is not, no longer active at this time, however, using data, they've researched that this area is one that is particularly, has been impacted with gun violence. So there's going to be the same as with Fair Lawn, they're gonna be providing food, tents, tables, chairs, books, so we've got a lot of city departments who are gonna be at this event, too. There's gonna be recycling seminar or demo on recycling. Of course, we're providing trash, water, and ice. Downtown Roanoke, Inc. have donated gift cards for downtown. We have Park Roanoke has also shared with some parking, parking ticket, I guess the opposite of ticket, right? Vouchers for downtown. So bus passes with Valley Metro. We're gonna have DOT downtown or down at this event, and they are gonna be providing internet access through hotspots. There's gonna be swag from the Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, the Burglum Center, and there's also gonna be some demos on riding the scooters and being safe with that, and so much more is gonna be over at Villa Heights. And then the last thing that I'll leave you with, and most of you were at, over at Stanton Park this weekend, but I wanted to highlight that Jeffrey, as you know, over at the beautification day at Stanton Park, he received the Star City Ceasefire Award. Jeffrey has really taken or seized the opportunity that Bob gave to him, and he's done an outstanding job, so I just wanted to leave you all with that. If you know Jeffrey, he leads with a lot of effort and passion, and he's done a great job and very deserving of that award.
And we'll have Jeffrey actually come here to be recognized for the council, maybe at the next meeting as well. We wanted to make sure he received the award on Saturday and then have him here as well. And of course, you all know also that I've been, I will be nominating Jeffrey also for a VML Award for the same effort that he's been doing as well. He's taken a really strong leadership role in this and should certainly be recognized for that. Also, I wanted to add one item, one additional item to Angie's update, which is our youth and gang violence outreach workers are all in Chicago this week for the National Conference on Gang Activities and other activities, so certainly they'll be returning with some additional information from that, and we may include that in the next briefing next month as well, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought that gang violence, well, trip to Chicago, Vice Mayor, I thought we were in line for that based on talking with the deputy mayor up there, they extended us an invitation, so I didn't, maybe we didn't put that in the budget.
I guess somehow somebody overlooked that, but I had planned on going, and we still can go, I don't know that we've missed the bus.
Well, they invited us, I don't think there's been any follow-up on that, but they invited us there to come up, the deputy mayor and his staff, as we deal with gun violence here.
And then the third item on this update, of course, is from the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, which is Councilmember Cobb and Councilmember Moon, if you have a question.
Thank you.
Before you go into yours, Joe, I did have a couple of questions for Angie, if I may. I'm sorry. When you mentioned the closing of the pool and that you were having the activity on August 14, and it was gonna be closed for renovations, will the pool be back open next year, or are these renovations the ones that we have already talked about relocating the pool?
Correct, this will be the actual demolition of the pool so that we can then construct new, so it will be closed for at least a full season. The hope is only one full season, so it will not be reopened next year, so we'll be...
So it'll be 2024?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted on that. And also, you mentioned, let me get down here, too, I'm a little bit more interested, and I think you mentioned you'll be getting some additional information on that, the Stop the Violence campaign?
Yes.
About the mural, I was kind of trying to follow you with regards to billboards. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that piece for me, please?
Sure, so they're just in the very beginning parts of this campaign, so the artists are gonna be painting this vinyl mural in the Coliseum. Additionally, they're going to have ads or really advertisements regarding the campaign Stop the Violence, they're gonna be on some of the billboards, I think Lamar, the Lamar billboards.
So it's outside or throughout the city billboards?
Yes.
The Lamar billboards, okay, that makes sense to me. And the other one on the empathy part, where you mentioned doing painting on the inside or outside the doors and mobile doors, I was kind of trying to follow you on that one, could you explain a little more?
Sure, so behind that, they're hollow core doors, and so they're gonna be standing in various areas of the Burglum Center, but they're also gonna be able to take those out, so it's kind of more of a mobile art project, and it's gonna tell the stories of those individuals, or the families, really, of those individuals who have been affected by gun violence. So the idea is that they're housed there for people to see, but they can also be out in the community for particular events, so people can see that, see those messages, and be aware of those families and how that's impacted them.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry, any other questions?
No, nothing.
No questions.
Thank you.
All right, we, we had Gun Violence Prevention Framework, is that where we are?
Yes.
I'll just give a couple of updates on the work of the commission. Angie touched a little bit on the youth and gang violence prevention team, but I did want to say, I believe in June, they initiated a monthly community circle. These are held in different locations, the last one was at the Melrose Library just last week. The team uses a Native American tradition to bring the community together for healing. The most recent topic was on men's health, which addressed physical, mental, and emotional health. The staff spoke on holistic health principles to empower men to be more health-conscious. Over 60 people attended last month, and this has just grown substantially over time. Thirteen young men graduated from the team's Rites of Passage program, which Antonio Stovall, a member of the team, leads this past Saturday. This has prepared the young men to work with other youth who are at high risk and encourage them to change behavior. It also prepares them to seek out and mentor other at-risk youth, and it's programs like these that have led young men, youth who are, we would consider, high-risk to gun violence, who maybe even have previously participated in it. Antonio shared the story at our last meeting of a young man who used to be involved in the Eighth Street Blood, and, you know, talked about his remorse of being involved in shooting, in robbing, regretting his actions, working to develop a different pathway of behavior, and wanting to inspire others to change. And I believe that these kinds of transformations that we're seeing in our young people are due to the relationships that are being built and established with them, and it is making a difference, but this is why anything prevention, intervention, and response-based has to be centered in relationships, because that's gonna lead to sustainable change. As Bob mentioned, the team is currently in Chicago, attending the International Gang Specialist Training Conference. Specialist Training Conference. Natalie Brown, who is the newest member of the team, is working on a program that will work with young women in jail to not only address recidivism, but to address their, you know, transforming their lives to shift away from gang and gun violence. Currently, the team is working with, I think they have 15 youth and young adults that are active cases. These are youth and young adults who have been directly involved with gangs in the community. They're working with nine who are in the 19 to 25 age range and six who are under 18. And that's really critical work that's taking place. In addition to what the team is doing, the commissioners, a number of the commissioners will be out tomorrow night for the National Night Out at several of the different events, distributing flyers with information about the work of the commission, the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team, and the Reset Team, as well as distributing free gun locks with safety information. So that will be happening tomorrow night. We just recently held a collaborative meeting with youth service providers. We have about 80 youth service providers in the community that we work with directly, and we're talking with them about four areas: youth employment, safe housing, safe spaces, youth activities, and mental health support. And in our work with them over the last year, we've identified some gap areas that we're creating strategies and looking for funding through state and federal grants to enhance these programs. But one of our key priorities is to make sure there are no barriers to access mental health support and trauma support, particularly for families and individuals who are at risk, who've either experienced gun violence or are at risk because of mental health challenges that might lead them to commit an act of gun violence. Many of you know that we had our second Groceries Not Guns event, and I just wanted to share a little bit of data. I will share this report with you all, so you'll have this information. This was compiled by Catherine Cable as part of the Groceries Not Guns effort, which we helped fund. This year, there were, there was an increase in participation. 151 guns were collected to be destroyed. Nearly 28,000 in grocery gift cards were distributed. That's twice from last year, twice the amount. 62 semi-automatic handguns and 83 rifles, shotguns, and revolvers. That's double last year. The participants, the demographics of the participants, majority were 75% male, 25% female. This was 10 times more female participants than we had last year. While the majority of male participants were Caucasian men, we had five times more African-American or black participants and eight times more minority participants than in '21. 20% of the participants self-identified as having an annual household income of $20,000 or less. The majority reported $40,000 or more. Eight times more participants in the 18 to 39 age range than in 2021, including four participants who were between the ages of 18 to 21 and five between 22 and 29. And just a few comments that people left on the anonymous surveys to complete. These were reasons for participation. One person said, "My husband has Alzheimer's and wanted both of us to be safe at home." Several said, "We just don't need them." One said, "I need the cash," and the reviews on it has nothing good to say. I'm guessing that's the reviews on the weapon? I don't know. I don't want to presume anything. And then, "Wasn't using for home defense, no need to have in the home." So that's some of the data. I will make copies of this so you all can see all of the data, and as you're talking with people in the community, I think this will be helpful information for you to have. We've got other things in the works, but I will share all of that and more in an update through email.
Joe, can I ask you to elaborate a little bit more on the women in jail, the counseling that's going on with women? Because women, they're stepping up in terms of violence. There's more fights being started with women. They seem to be getting more involved in a lot of the criminal activity one way or another. So I was impressed with that, that they're receiving some counsel.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Angie if she can address that because she has a little more information on that than I do.
Sure. And again, this is fairly new. Natalie Brown, one of the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Outreach Workers, this is something that she felt really was important to do. The Williamson Road meeting with the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, Sheriff Hash and his folks came and spoke to the commission, and that's where she got the inspiration to create a program and work with them, some of the stuff that they already had underway with the jail. So it's a program just working with women under the age of 25, you know, the target group that the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Outreach Team is working with. And it's really just to work on ways that they can come back out, strengthen their relationships, find ways to be positive, make positive impact in the community, also thinking about job skills and things like that. But there's not a whole lot of information.
Okay. Well, I hope to keep getting updates on that because I think it's really important because just from observation, I'm seeing young girls, women get involved, are involved in a lot of things. Matter of fact, I remember reviewing a video of a fight in one of the high schools, and the girls I saw were very, very aggressive. I mean, they would come and go low on you and pick you up, and so I'm saying, I think that's a good move to help us with regards to violence. It's not all the time, always, the young boys or the young men, and so I think focusing more attention on the women is a good thing.
Right, absolutely. I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, I stopped by her office to find out where she was, and she had just finished the curriculum. So we're looking to roll that out really soon. So, you know, there'll be some sort of informational guide or something similar that will be created. We'll make sure you get a copy of that.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I just wanted to add, you know, a lot of us were out Saturday at different events, not only the beautification day, but the Love Fest in Southeast. And I just wanted to commend the police, not only for being present in the community, engaging with the community, but responding as quickly as they did to the news of the issue on Hershberger. So I just wanted to thank our department for their ongoing efforts to engage in the community and build those relationships and respond in the professional and timely way in which they do.
Good. Go after the bad guys, even when we're doing good stuff.
Yeah.
Another way to do it, okay.
You know, it was kind of a strange convergence of realities on Saturday, but it takes all of that to address the situation.
I like that statement, a convergence of realities. Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cobb, thank you for that report. That was really good. And Ms. O'Brien, all that information is really good. The thing that caught my attention is when you talked about the 80 youth service organizations. I made a note of that. And we're finally able to quantify some of this stuff. You know, we're like, what's happening with all this money and all this prevention that we're doing? So you were able to at least put some numbers with it and to quantify it. But as far as the 80 youth services, their focus is on employment, safe places, and mental health support, or removing the barriers. That's a lot of organizations. Who's coordinating that? Who's facilitating that?
The, well, to give you a little backstory on this, the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is essentially coordinating it.
Okay, okay.
But it came, all of this came about because of the mini grant, one of the mini grants we gave last year to TAP.
Okay.
And TAP wanted to center, they wanted to create a series of events which centered the voices of youth and their experiences of violence, you know, what their barriers to success were, pathways to opportunity. So they held a youth summit and then subsequent summits to bring youth and youth service providers together. Part of that was also the creation of a youth roundtable. And we went to William Fleming this spring and talked with two classes from the African-American Culture and Contemporary Issues class that TAP started decades ago. Antonio Stovall, who's on our team, leads that class. And one day was all young men, the next day was coed class. And so we took that information from those classes and brought it back to the youth service providers to hear what the youth were seeing as priorities. And so these key areas were what emerged from hearing from the youth voices.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. I just wondered who I would follow up with to find out specifically what would be done to increase employment, what would be done for...
Yeah, I can share, yeah, I can share with you the worksheets we've been building on.
You don't have to do it now in the setting, but...
There's good information there.
Yeah, I'd like to have that information. That's why I wanted to know who was actually facilitating it because it would be good to know how they're going to address these three priorities, which are very good priorities.
Exactly. And actually, at the last meeting, we identified key strategies in each area.
In order to do that, that's what I'm interested in here. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Ms. Moon?
Joe, you and I had met last Friday, and we had a conversation with regards to the Better Agreements. And I appreciate the time you took with me to explain what that involved. And I wanted to follow up on that. Could you explain again with regards to the agreement with this group and what their role is? And I believe you shared some of that at the June, the first meeting in June, a little bit more on the community volunteer piece. But I just wanted to, for public's sake, if you could, talk about that contract and the cost involved and where it's at in its phases and if any money has been allocated or expended to them thus far.
Yes, so we contracted with Better Agreements, which is a conflict resolution. It's actually a regional organization that works in the New River Valley, all the way up to Harrisonburg, including Roanoke, to provide first step violence prevention training on conflict resolution, de-escalation skills, mediation practices. It's a 20-hour series of high-quality training. We funded the program through the Gun Violence Intervention Program Grant, which came from the state. And there's been a process, because this was originally contracted and begun during COVID last year, we've had difficulty getting the first cohort together, but the last report I have is that we've had 20 applications received. So 20 citizens have already signed up to take the training. We're looking at starting the first cohort later this month. I have a copy of the paper application, which is also online, and a flyer that tells more as well as the outline of the program. This is absolutely free to citizens. We wanted to make sure, our goal is to have 100 citizens over the course of a number of years trained in conflict resolution, to be available, to be on call, to act as, you know, we're not, this isn't, isn't to put them in harm's way, but this is to preempt and intervene in local situations, relational situations, to teach more people how to resolve conflict before it becomes violent. And I will make sure you all get copies of this, too, with the other information. Yeah.
So with regards to the Better Agreements, in this conflict resolution, is that the only thing that they will be offering?
Yeah, they were specifically contracted with to provide what they do professionally, which is conflict resolution training.
And what was the cost for that RFP?
It wasn't an RFP. It was a grant that we were able to distribute through the Gun Violence Intervention Program, and I believe it's $32,000.
$32,000.
And that's to cover the complete cost for the trainers, the facilitators, and the cost of the participants.
Okay.
How long did that take, what did you say?
So the training is 20 hours.
20 hours, okay.
And they're trying to gauge from people who apply their availability as to when to do the training. The first cohort, I think they're looking at doing, based on the feedback they've gotten, will probably be Saturday afternoons and evenings, and they'll probably split that 20 hours up into segments. I don't know whether they'll be four-hour segments or...
Right, the whole day.
Yeah, because that's a lot of commitment, but it's extensive training. And we're also working with the Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team and the Reset Team to make sure that folks who are already participating in that can access this training as well.
And the contract runs from, until, is this a yearly?
It's through '23.
Okay, so it's a one-year contract?
Two-year.
Two-year contract?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it renewable or is it just...
The, well, if...
If need be.
It might be.
Okay.
You know, this was a Gun Violence Intervention Program Grant that had a two-year lifespan on it. So I'm hopeful the state will open solicitations for that again because it was in that grant that we were able to hire our Youth and Gang Violence Prevention Team. So 375,000 of it went toward personnel and support, and 125,000 of it went to programs. And this is one of the programs that focused on conflict resolution.
Okay, so this, so this contract did not come out of the 75,000?
A portion of it did.
A portion, okay.
To supplement it, I think 10,000.
Okay.
And that would have been last year's funding.
Right, last year's, what I was trying to get to. So only 10,000 came out of last year's funding. Okay, that's what I need. Thank you.
You know, I was just going to follow up with that. Does the grant dictate how it's spent also? Does it have to be, are there guidelines?
Yeah, in our proposal, we identified six program areas, and so it has to follow those guidelines.
It has to follow, okay.
And each of those has very specific objectives and outcomes that have to be measurable, and we report that back to the state.
Okay, I was wondering how that worked. Thank you, Mr. Cobb.
Joe, let me ask you, is there an administrator that follows all of these grants and who pays it and all of that?
There she is, right in the room. It's a lot.
It is a lot.
Yeah.
I don't hate counting those guys. I'll give them the credit.
Yeah, no, Angie's the grant monitor for that, and that's a, as with a lot of the state grants, it goes often through the city manager's office, but there's a project director and administrator, and Angie serves in that role.
But you have specific measures or things that need to be measured, but is that applicable to the other grants? I mean, does it...
Yes, yeah. Any grants that we give, there are measurables and outcomes. And for example, with the ARPA funds, in addition to the ARPA guidelines of reporting that's required, we have outcomes that we're looking for as well.
For the grants.
Yeah. And those, in fact, at our last meeting, we identified, each commissioner is going to serve as a partner with two or three of the grantees to do regular check-ins to measure the progress along the way. And if we see that a grantee is not able to fulfill, then we'll pull that back if we need to, or if they need extra guidance in how to fulfill the objectives that were laid out, because all of those are very clear. Also, Wayne Leftwich in the city manager's office, one of his roles is to monitor all of the ARPA-funded programs, whether that's arts-related or EDA. Who are some of the other examples?
Arts, nonprofit.
Human services, and the gun violence prevention ones as well. So there are several checks and balances.
Okay, and I know there are checks and balances. I'm just wondering, because that's the part that a lot of us don't get to...
I'm just wondering, because that's the part that a lot of us don't get to see, and I'd like to see it. So, you know, I know we can't all show up at the commission meetings, or I guess we could, I don't think there's anything that prohibits us from doing that. But I would like to see that information and how it's reported and.
I would like to request that if we see it for one body, we see it for all of them in a matter of transparency. So the Arts Commission, the Human Services.
And we should, we should.
I think all of that information, if we're, if we want to see it, let's make sure it's consistent across the board.
That makes more sense than anything.
Because we're following all the same metrics. I mean, they change a little bit because of the focus of the grant funding, but I think we need to be consistent in what we're requesting.
And I think, I think you have a valid point there. I think with the Arts Commission, I don't know that they're dealing with as many dollars as the Gun Violence Commission. There's a lot of money that's being, you know, that's coming through the commission. And not saying that, I mean, I'm sure it's all done and there's checks and balances, but I'm just saying, I would like to be able to see it. As with the Arts Commission, I guess we need to see them all, just to see how they're operating and how that money is being spent and the measurables.
Yep, and that's fine.
And I would like to follow, if I could, Mayor, on what the Vice Mayor said. Because part of what she mentioned, Joe and I talked a little bit about that during our conversation. And that was the criteria to look at using the same criteria that you use for Arts Commission as well as for the Human Advisory Committee when they are appropriating funds. The same criteria would be used for the gun violence when they are issuing funds as well. Joe, did you want to elaborate a little bit on that piece that we talked about? Since you were more active, involved in the allocation being given to the nonprofits and others who had put in an application for funding.
Well, I will share, again, I can share this information with you. I have a timeline of the, that covers the process that we went through to not only open applications, but review them for the mini-grants and the two-year cycle of funds. I'll be glad to share that with you. It was very comprehensive.
Right, I think when we had the conversation, we were just trying to say to come up with something more standard to be used across the board in processing.
For all of them.
Applications when you're looking at funding. For arts, whether it was for the arts or whether it was for the Human Advisory Board to give out funding, as well as for HUD funding, just looking at a criteria to use a standard.
And I guess, just to be clear, so.
That wouldn't be used though.
And some of this would be ARPA, some of it's not the ARPA first. So there are a set number of requirements under the ARPA funding, which started all the way back to when the advisory panel met. Remember, we kind of talked about, hey, these are kind of the ground rules, is what we can and cannot spend money on. Then the Treasury has added to those along the way. They did that with CARES Act as well. So that's kind of one level. So that, and that's the really basic things. Those are things like, we have to have an agreement, you know, it can only be used for these broad categories, not these other kinds of things. That's the piece that actually is getting reported out of my office, that Wayne is reporting back to the Treasury. So he's reporting that information to say, we have agreements, they're providing their quarterly reports or what have you, pretty, pretty basic. Then inside each of the funding categories, there were specific initiatives, so there were specific things that were trying to be accomplished. EDA, for example. So the EDA had, in their charge, they still had to meet all the ARPA requirements, but in their charge, they were responsible also for trying to provide grant funding for businesses subject to certain criteria. They had to be in business at a certain time, they had to maintain business, they had to explain how they were going to use the money to respond to something with COVID. Some type of criteria, but very different, is also, was used for the nonprofits, for the arts groups, for individuals that were seeking assistance through DSS. So each of those kind of have their own sort of collection of things. Those are also being collected and reported as we go along. That's ARPA, and that's set aside, that funding that you all provide annually for the arts groups, for the Arts Commission to fund, similarly have kind of basic criteria. Got to have agreements, got to have, go through a process, those kinds of things. But they have a very specific arts-oriented sort of objective that they're trying to accomplish, that they're evaluating those against. That would be true and different for those that are going through, seeking the Human Services Advisory Board funding, for example, which has a different sort of perspective. So that's why I say, it's just, some of them, there are some common sort of criteria across all of them, but they're pretty basic. Then you get into the really nuanced criteria, which are unique to each program. And again, that's true whether that's ARPA, or whether it's the funding you all provide, or whether it's the funding that HUD provides as we go through those. So that's why I think, you know, for example, we could provide the report that Wayne submits to Treasury. I assure you that you will find it to be extremely boring and actually limited in its usefulness, because it's very, it really is, did you enter into an MOU? Yes. Did you, you know, did they file their quarterly report? Yes. You know, those kinds, it really doesn't get into what you're really looking for, which is, did they meet the objectives that we were set, that we had set out in those? Those are going to come literally project by project, agreement by agreement, as we go through. And when they finish, you know, we will have to figure out a way to package that up to make it available for you and the public to understand what the criteria were. You know, we haven't, we're some time away from that, because most of these grants are still a year, two years to run their course through. And there's, I mean, literally thousands of them, when you consider all the individual funding that we've done, as well for individuals, as well as businesses, as well as nonprofits. But we'll figure out a way to actually make all of those available as you go through there, so you can really look and see what was intended to be accomplished and what was accomplished as you work your way through those. Yeah, it's a.
It's a lot.
Yeah, and then just imagine, what we're doing is being done literally by every single community in the country. Because every community in the country received funding under the ARPA program that is obligated to do something very similar to what we're doing. So, and Treasury arguably is supposed to be reporting back to Congress in the same fashion to say, this is what was accomplished by those dollars and those expenses. And a piece of this, of course, is dedicated to combating gun violence. So that's, you know, that's the piece we've been talking about here, is some of the grant funding that went to that effort. There's some grant funding through the state that also comes from ARPA or other sources that also is coming here to combat gun violence in addition to our ARPA dollars. And that has yet another reporting requirement, because that's state money, not our local money. So, but yeah, as we go along, we have to be able to calculate ways in which to demonstrate what was intended to be accomplished and what was accomplished.
Well, I think since it, do you have anything, Mayor?
It's for Mr. Cobb.
Yes.
Mr. Cobb, if an organization said that they were going to use the money for certain things in their description, they were going to do, let's say, jump roping competition, whatever it was they were going to do, and at the end of the term during the evaluation, you find out that this organization did not provide the services that they're going to do, what recourse does the city have?
Sure, there's, so there's a couple of answers to that. One, every one of these recipients enters into a contract with the city, whether that's an individual receiving benefits, or a business, or a nonprofit. And inside there, there's a bunch of requirements, including insurance requirements, commitments to what you're going to spend the funds for, and there's description in there of what happens if they do not comply with those requirements. Part of the reason why Wayne is doing the quarterly reports is because we're obligated to provide those quarterly reports to Treasury, again, because Treasury is asking the same question. We've given this money to localities, how are they using the money and how are they verifying that? So we don't have to wait till the end. So if we found along the way someone was using it improperly or not using it, we could begin to take action at that point in time. And certainly at the end, we have that final check, very similar to what we do with HUD. We provide HUD funding, and at the end, we do a final check to verify that all the requirements were met. If indeed the requirements were not met, we have the ability, because we have that contract, to seek the funds to be returned from those individuals, businesses, or organizations as we go our way through. But again, the idea is with the quarterly check-ins, we can avoid that along the way. We don't have to wait till the end to find out that something's not working indeed the way that it was intended to.
Thank you.
Sure.
Who makes that decision?
You mean, the decision whether it's working or not?
Whether it's working or they fail to follow what they.
There are, there are performance measures that are included in the agreements and in their scope of services, so that's what they're reporting on. So if those performance measures were demonstrating that they were, and I'll use the example that council member mentioned, which is, say you had, you were going to do, say you were going to do these items, items X, Y, and Z, and you're, instead we're doing A, B, and C, and that's what you reported, then we would basically be able to take action at that point in time. So it's part of what they have to report back to us as they work their way through the project. You know, a lot of these projects are kind of done once. So small business assistance, for example, they said, we'll do these things, here's the money, they do one check and they're done with it. Others, like for example, the funding that was provided to LEAP for food security, you know, that's probably going to take every bit of the two and a half years to go through that whole process. So we're checking in with them along the way as they go. But yes, that, it's actually what they agree to do, that we verify, do meet the requirements of the Treasury, then they have to report to us along the way, demonstrating that they're actually doing that work.
Good. Ms. Moonraun?
Thank you. So they receive the total amount upfront to perform the functions that they have put in their MOU?
They do, for the, for the ARPA funding, that is correct.
Right, the ARPA funding.
And that was the way the CARES Act funding worked as well. Those funds are, if it's a, if it's what's referred to as a subrecipient agreement, so if it's someone that we actually can enter into a contract where they become responsible for the delivery, I'll use my LEAP example again. So in LEAP's case, they're a nonprofit, they can be a subrecipient to the city. City enters into a contract with them, provides them that funding upfront, and then they implement it and report how it's being spent along the way. There are other programs where we're actually the ones managing the program and actually delivering those. And of course, those would not provide funding. That would be, basically, we're buying things as we go along in those, in those efforts. I'm trying to think of a good example with one of those, but for example, when we get into the transit projects, it'll probably be that way. We're not gonna, we'll likely manage those transit projects along the way, because there's really no one to turn money over to, if you will, as you work your way through. So it kind of depends on which, which type of arrangement it is. But many of those are funded upfront, so that they can actually do the work that's required.
Such as the mini-grants that the Gun Violence Commission gave out. Those two-year, for the two-year, they get their full amount.
That's correct. They are subrecipients under that. And that's another reason why we, there are a couple of reasons why we are not able to partner with for-profit businesses in the same way that we are for not-for-profit. Not-for-profits can become a subrecipient and therefore enter into that kind of agreement. For-profits are run through our EDA. So EDA actually grants funds to for-profit businesses to assist in their recovery from COVID, and, but they have to handle that. So they're actually handling that for us. We actually provided the EDA all the money upfront, and then they actually administer those grants as they go forward. But that's because.
And you're monitoring EDA the same way, correct?
Correct, yeah, because EDA is technically our subrecipient in that regard, not those individual businesses. And then they are, they and we are monitoring those individual businesses, though, once they receive the funding.
Thank you.
Sure.
What, you have a question? Okay, all right, that's, does that cover all of our briefings?
That does, thank you, yes.
Okay. All right. We'll receive and file it, and we'll get the information that's coming to us as Councilman Cobb mentioned. So we're going to go into recess now until 2:00 for a closed meeting in the council conference room. Counselors in recess.